Good evening and welcome to this evening's council meeting for June 12, 2017. I'm Mayor Ted Schaefer and with me this evening are my council colleagues, Councillor Jack Arnold, Councillor Paul Albrecht, Councillor Rudy Storteboum, Councillor Gail Martin, Councillor Val Vandenberg, and Councillor Nathan Pahal. At the corporate table, we have Graham Flack, Deputy Director of Corporate Services. We have Paula Cusack, Deputy Corporate Officer, and Frances Chung, our CAO. At the other table, we have Roy Beddoe, Deputy Director of Development Services and Economic Development, Rick Baumhoff, Director of Engineering, Parks and Environment, and Kim Hilton, Director of Recreation, Culture and Community Services. So the first item is the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Martin, Councillor Arnold. All those in favor? Against, it's unanimous four. Second is the adoption of the minutes, that the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 29, 2017 be adopted as circulated. Councillor Storteboum, Councillor Albrecht. All those in favor? Against, it's unanimous four. Mayors' report, the next regular council meeting is June 26, and the next one after that is July 10, which is televised. Under Metro Vancouver, Councillor Storteboum, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Metro Vancouver report for June 12, 2017. Metro Vancouver advises, in the recent caring for the airport, that air quality is improving in the region even while the population is growing significantly throughout the area. Also, Metro offers a big thank you to Mayor Schaefer and Councillors Martin and Vandenberg for attending the Metro Vancouver reception at the recent Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference. At the event, Metro representatives took the initiative of distributing rolls of toilet paper to attendees to remind everyone that we need to be careful about what we flush. At the Climate Action Committee, after attending a recent conference about electric vehicles, I am actively engaged in conversations about the emergence of the electric vehicle, the share-ride economy, the viability of autonomous vehicles, and the future of private and public transportation in the marketplace and Langley City in particular. In my opinion, after almost 200 years since inception, the electric vehicle finally seems poised to inherit the transportation industry from the internal combustion engine. Also, please note that a review of the WEIR and EPCO Air Quality Applications Report has been postponed to the July meeting. With this report, air quality application numbers and an overview of air application processes are expected. The board in brief is being prepared and is about to be sent to your inboxes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Storteboum. The next item we have is from staff. It's an engineering update by Mr. Baumhoff.
All right, thank you very much. This is the update for June 2017. And we have a slide here showing the Linwood Park Playground expansion, where we've added a zip cruise line for kids and some new climbing features, substantial expansion, mostly for the five to 12-year age group, which wasn't represented, or largely represented at that playground before. And from the usage of this past weekend, I understand it was very well-used, so very well-received by the public. We've also added a new pedestrian crossing at Fraser Highway and Old Yale Road, so which accesses to the park at the Derek Double Day Arboretum. And just some before and after shots of the Boulevard Maintenance Crew work done. So on the left is a before shot on 200th Street, and on the right is after. So substantial upgrades, left again before and right after. And this one is on 50A Avenue, and before shot, just showing the grass and the cracks and the weeds in the sidewalks, and afterwards, all cleaned up. So we've been able to do a lot with the new Boulevard Maintenance Crew, dedicated crew. So this is the Penzer Park, Action Park upgrade. So it's not complete yet, but it will be within the next two weeks, and the grand opening is scheduled for June 29 at 4:00 p.m. We've also had new highway direction signs installed, so both east and westbound on Highway 1, they'll have these kind of direction signs to the Langley City Centre. There's also a sign added, two signs along the way onto Glover Road, both, I forget the name of the street, it was the connector road between the freeway and Glover, there's a sign there, as well as a sign on Glover near the Mercedes dealership. And current projects, construction projects we're working on is the Water Park Expansion at City Park, Hunter Park redevelopment, the Portage Park Picnic Shelter, which will be located close to the parking area, the Penzer Park Action Park, as I just mentioned, completion scheduled for next week, and Newlands Drive, 210th Street, storm sewer installation and water main replacement and paving, and 56th Avenue project Glover Road to Langley bypass, including all the underground utilities and above-ground roadworks and sidewalk improvements. And as well, the Douglas Park fitness equipment is going in as we speak, and that will be done before the Community Day event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council to Mr. Baumhoff? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Interesting slides there, and park improvement is quite something. Great job by your staff there.
Thank you.
Because I know that two councillors from this table were there on the weekend, so I think one of them probably tried out the zip line already, so. Next, we have Kim Hilton, who's going to give us a recreation update.
Good evening. Recreation update for June, and you'll see our new templates here for our logo, so we each have our color codes assigned. Recreation is green, very exciting here. And we're starting with special events, and of course, now with May and June, July, all of our, we have many, many special events, so there'll be quite a few here today. Community Day is this Saturday, and it's from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Douglas Park. We have a very full agenda of entertainment, booths, and different fun activities in the park, so I encourage everyone to come down. The Christian Life Assembly is assembling a hockey rink in our parking lot, Douglas Parking Lot. So if people want to come down and play ball hockey, please bring your sticks and your helmets and come down for a great day of fun. Our paid-on called firefighters will also be there doing their firefighter challenge for the youth, and that's always a big hit as well. And not to forget that council will be out there at 2:30 planting their planters that will be auctioned off, or not auctioned off, will be raffled off at no cost, for anyone who is on-site at the time we draw the names. And in addition, this year, again, Canadian Tire has been very supportive of us and continue to donate a barbecue that will be raffled off as well, but you do have to be there to win it. This is one of our many Canada 150 events that we're hosting, so you'll see the theme is red and white. Next, or not, third, last week in June, June 29 already, the kids are out of school. So Al Anderson Memorial Pool holds the Schools Out Party, and this year's theme is Let's Flamenco. So it's from 1:00 to 4:00, regular rates apply, and the staff have planned a ton of activities, fun activities, in and out of the water. So drop on down to Al Anderson Pool for Let's Flamenco Pool's Out Party. I'm also announcing the Penzer Park Grand Opening, and that's just after the Pool's Pool Park, Pool's Schools Out Party. So you go from the pool at 4:00 to Penzer Bike Park and Activity Park, and you'll get to have a ton of other activities that you get to participate in. We will have rec workers there doing crafts and doing games of the various activities, as well as some parkour specialists that will be able to show you how to use the equipment there. So that's at 4:00 at Penzer Activity Park. The pool is also hosting the Canada Day 150 Birthday Celebration, July 1, 1:00 to 4:00. It's a free event, so come one, come all, and help us celebrate Canada's 150 birthday, and wear red or white. And there's draw prizes for swimming passes and lessons if you get dressed up. You'll see around the different facilities, Douglas Rec Center, City Hall, Tim's Community Centre, the library, this promotional piece, it's for all our special events that are happening in the city over the summer. It's a great resource to have in your back pocket or your purse, to carry around and see what fun activities are available. Many of them are free, and it'll keep the family and friends happy all summer long. Our first movie this year is the film called La La Land. It is on Friday, July 7, and it's in Douglas Park, so come one, come all, and bring your blankets. There'll be a small concession with popcorn and goodies there, and enjoy a movie out in the park. Now for some programs. We do have push plays back again for another year at Douglas Park. It's a free family drop-in. It runs Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:30 to 11:30. There's a variety of crafts and activities and games at Douglas Park. We have a couple of recreation leaders that will be on hand to assist and ensure that everyone in the family has a good time. So that's Douglas Park. We're also hosting our city walks again. They actually started in May. They run on, let me actually get the, just get the poster because I can't read that, it's so small. They run 6:00 to 7:30. On Mondays, the group meets at Douglas Park, and on Thursdays, they meet at Bryan Park, and they go through some lovely trails, all our city trails, go through Sendle Gardens and all that, and it's a fun time, and it's a great friendship building as well, and we have a leader that leads those walks. And of course, we did mention Schools Out Party at the pool, which means school is going to be out shortly, and parents are wondering what to do with their children. Well, we have the Fantastic Adventures Summer Day Camp. It's always an amazing program that runs weekly throughout the entire summer. It's based out of Douglas Recreation Centre. You can sign up for individual days or for week-long activities. Every Friday, the kids go to a different spot, whether it's the Cults Lake Water Slides or the Aquarium, for a special outing. Tuesdays and Thursdays, they are at City Park and at Al Anderson Memorial Pool for the afternoon, going swimming, and then the rest of the time, they're at Douglas Rec Center or Douglas Park, doing a ton of different activities, cooking, crafts, sports, you name it. So as I mentioned, you can register for the whole week or individual days, and we do have before or after care available as well. If you're interested in registering or finding more about it, please phone 604-514-2865. We have a new power yoga drop-in class, and maybe we'll see some of our staff in this one. It looks like it's going to be a fun class, but it is Wednesdays, and it runs from 9:45 to 10:45 at Tim's Community Centre. Our regular drop-in rates apply. And this is a cardio workout combining yoga poses with dynamic flowing movements for a calorie-burning workout that strengthens tones and increases flexibility. And finally, I've shown this a couple times, we're offering, it's been a very popular course, it's Foam Rolling 101. Space is limited, and our next class is going to be Sunday, June 25, from 1:30 to 2:30, and again, it's at Tim's Community Centre. Space is limited, so if you can pre-register at 604-514-2940. Oh, and the 30-minute abs, another class, that's a new program, and that runs 3:15 to 3:45 on Wednesdays at Tim's Community Centre, and again, the regular drop-in rates apply. If you want to have that six-pack for this summer, drop into this class, and you're sure to have it before the end of the summer. And that is the end of my presentation. Any questions?
No, I just, it's great for Community Day. I'd just like to say thank you to Canadian Tire on 200th Street for donating a barbecue, and to Potter's Nursery, I believe, on 192nd, that are supplying the plants and pots and topsoil for the planting session that's on at 2:30. And I know Councillor Pahal has to leave early, so we'll get him to plant his raffle prize early, so. I, no, yeah. Yeah, so council always has a lot of fun with that. Please come out to Community Day, and thank you, Kim, for putting it all together. It's a lot of hard work. Thank you to your staff.
Team effort, for sure. Thank you.
Team effort. Committee reports that, I'll read out the motion, then I'll ask Councillor Pahal to speak to the, to this. The council amend the Develop and Sustainable Program to Deter Crime and Target Crime Hotspot Task Force mandate item, conducting a SEPTED review at geographic areas where there are high levels of crime by deleting, conducting, and inserting, promoting. I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Pahal, Councillor Storteboum. Councillor Pahal?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just in discussion with the RCMP and our committee members, we determined that indeed the RCMP have SEPTED programs in place, and that it would be better for us to be more of an advocate to promote those existing programs, as opposed to try to re-event the wheel with that. So that is why we put this change in here, so we would be able to promote the existing RCMP programs more fully.
Thank you. Now call question? All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. And there's another motion, that council change the name of the Deter Crime and Target Crime Hotspots Task Groups to Crime Prevention Task Group. Councillor Pahal is going to move it, and seconded by Councillor Vandenberg. Do you want to say anything about that one, or is it self-explanatory?
I think simply how long it took to state the original name is why we decided to change it, Mr. Mayor.
That's great. You wouldn't want to chew gum and say that one, so. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. The next item we have is the Admin Report, and this is the 2017 to 2021 Strategic Plan, and the motion is that City Council adopt the 2017 to 2021 Strategic Plan for the City of Langley. I need a mover, and then we'll have a discussion. Councillor Albrecht, Councillor Storteboum. Yeah, Mr. Chung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillor. I'm pleased to introduce the 2017 and 2021 Strategic Plan. With the completion of majority of the initiatives under the 2013 and 2017 Strategic Plan, and with new incoming council members after the last draft, the Strategic Plan was drafted, the new 2017 and 2021 Strategic Plan sets new directions for City Council and staff to pursue in the next five years. The Strategic Plan sets long-term and short-term goals. It is a living document that will change as goals are achieved and the needs of the community evolve. Each key result area shares the same significance as the other in order to achieve our visions and our mission. The Strategic Plan guides all planning processes within the City of Langley based on three fundamental elements: our vision, our mission, and our values, built on input from City Council, staff, citizens, and other stakeholders. In terms of terminology that we use in the Strategic Plan, a vision is a clear and concise statement of the desired future, what the community will be like when the goals of the city key focus areas are achieved. The mission statement is the role of the City of Langley and its purpose, and thus, and I'll get into that in my next slide. And the mission and the core values are the beliefs and principles that guide city staff and council. And key results areas are priorities expressed by council, and the desired results to be achieved in support of the visions that is longer term in the future. And initiatives are priorities for the shorter term, between one to three years. Our vision remains the same, the place to be. Our mission is slightly changed, it is now a vibrant, healthy, and safe community, and our values remain the same, is people, respect, integrity, dynamics, expectation, and the acronym is pride. Our new Strategic Plan will focus on seven results areas, where we believe changes and improvements can be made to enhance the livability of our community for all citizens. Those areas are improving our infrastructure, enhancing the quality of life in our city, communicating with our residents more effectively, revitalizing our downtown core, protecting, preserving, restoring, sustaining, and enhancing our environment, ensuring our citizens' safety and security, and investing in organizational development. We have 44 initiatives under the seven key focus areas. Some of the illustrative examples of those initiatives are: enhance the multimodal transportation network within the community, and to encourage greater pedestrian and cyclist use as per the master transportation plan; support a regional rapid transit system to downtown Langley under the Metro Vancouver Mayor's 10-year visions for Metro Vancouver Transit and Transportation; implement the strategies identified in the Parks, Recreation and Culture Master Plan and Nature Trail Network Plan, aimed at enhancing recreation, trail and park amenities, and leisure opportunities in the community; hold regular neighborhood meetings and other forums for City Council to communicate and interact directly with residents; support and actively participate in shaping a vibrant, safe, and clean downtown; develop an urban forest management strategy; partner with social service agencies to develop programs to mitigate social and homeless issues in the community; create a multi-departmental core enforcement team to address public safety and homelessness issues; maintain our results-oriented workforce that possesses a can-do attitude; and deliver efficient and effective services and programs by performing regular reviews to ensure services remain efficient and reflect what the community wants. Progress on the Strategic Plan initiatives is reported publicly in the city's annual report and the departmental business plan each year. Every five years, plans and goals are extensively reviewed and updated. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, I know you've put hours and hours of time into this, and so have staff, and council have worked along with staff at a few workshops, and it looks like a simple document, but it does take a lot of time to put together, and on behalf of council, thank you.
Thank you. Like you said, it took a lot of time, and as again, like Ms. Hilton said, it's teamwork with City Council, staff, not only the management staff, all the staff in the city has a finger on this, so I want to thank them for their contribution as well.
No, it's not an easy job to do. So seeing nothing, I shall call a question. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous. The next item we have, and Councillor Vandenberg's going to excuse herself. This is the 2018 RCMP Approval in Principle, and I'll read out the motion, then I'll get a mover and a seconder. That council authorize a letter of approval in principle be sent to the Minister of Public Safety and Solicitor General to maintain the detachment strength at 51.35 members and increase the 100% RCMP budget by $308,858 for an RCMP total budget cap of $10,902,813, wow, a lot of money. Councillor Martin, seconded by Councillor Arnold. Discussion on this at all, I'll ask Mr. Flack to give us a bit of background on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report is really a response for the federal government as a, more of a planning tool. They fund 10% of our RCMP operations, and they're currently in their planning phase for their 2018, 2019 fiscal year. So at this point, we're just giving them a status quo budget, the amount there of the budget cap of $10.9 million. We'll be revisiting this fall as part of our financial plan process for the 2018 calendar year.
Thank you. Councillor Pahal?
Thank you very much. Through the mayor, I guess we'd be looking at, as this stands right now, about a 3% increase compared to this year's budget, if it kind of goes along this course?
For the RCMP portion, yes. The increase, their increase will impact our tax rates by about 1%.
Further discussion? Councillor Storteboum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to note that we're sure paying a premium for policing our four square miles, and I just think it's a tremendous lot of money, but that's the cost of policing in our city now, so I'll vote in favor. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four, with the exception of Councillor Vandenberg. Next item we have is the Traffic Calming on 50 Avenue at Conder Park, and I'll read out the recommendations, and there are a couple of changes here, so then I'll ask for a mover and a seconder. That council approve the Traffic Calming Option A on 50 Avenue from 198B Street to 50A Avenue, including two speed bumps, a raised sidewalk, and curb extensions at 198 Street, 198B Street, for an estimated budget of $40,000, and that council approve traditional traffic calming measures based on the public feedback, including up to five additional speed humps on 50 Avenue to the west of Conder at a price of an estimated $30,000. And that council approve traffic commers, measures on 197B Street, up to three speed bumps for an estimated budget of $18,000, and that council approve traffic calming on 50A Avenue, up to five speed humps for an estimated budget of $30,000. And anything else in this report will come back from staff for more info. Councillor Martin, Councillor Pahal? Move in a secondary?
Well, I'd like to.
Yep. Councillor Martin?
I'll move items 1, 3, and 4. And so that would be the first motion, if I can get a seconder.
Hmm?
Are we doing this?
The second motion would be that I refer item 2 back to staff.
Okay. So an amendment by Councillor Martin, Councillor Vandenberg. All those in favor of the amendment? Against? Yeah?
That's what we decided, refer back to staff.
So what was?
Everybody's looking confused.
Yeah, I, okay, so again, for the amendment, those in favor of the amendment? Against the amendment? I think.
So, the amendment's carried, looks like to me? With the mayor opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed. I'm kind of lost at it, because I took out the fans on Conder and the activated rapid lights there. So is Councillor Martin confused on this?
No, I thought we were going to remove the whole item 2 to, back to staff.
That was my understanding as well.
Hi.
So right now, we have a carried amendment to remove all of item 2.
And refer it back to staff.
That's right.
Refer to item 2 back to staff.
So the main motion would be items 1, 3, and 4.
Okay. All righty. So, I'm, okay, who's opposed? Councillor Pahal's opposed, I'm opposed, Councillor Arnold's opposed. For again.
No, I went 4.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so the amendment is carried, and you'll need to?
The amendment is carried, so now I need a motion on the main motion, and that was by Councillor Martin and Councillor Pahal. So, on the main motion now, all those in favor? It's unanimous four. Second item is that council approve Traffic Calming, Traffic Calming Option B on Second item is that council approve traffic calming option B on 198 Street from 53 Avenue to 56 Avenue for an estimated cost of $42,000, and that council approve additional traffic calming measures based on the public feedback, such as curb extension at the intersection of 198 Street and 53rd at an estimated cost of $50,000. And the other stuff will be deferred back to staff for more info, so I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Pahal, councillor Vandenberg. All discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous for. All righty. That was clear as mud. Okay, anything under new and unfinished? Nothing. I need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Vandenberg, councillor Pahal. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy Canada Day, everybody.